Hey, apologies. Let's call the meeting the work session tomorrow.
We will fully, your best and present on the sewer and water utility rate study. I'm gonna turn off the lights, so hopefully you can. You may have to move and position yourself.
I gave you a copy of everything I have, so you can read it too. Oh, okay. That screen's kinda hard to see, but I copied it all up. The old fashioned way. I got burned a long time ago when we even had the little trays that went around like that. And one of the trays quit working. I didn't have any hard copies. Ever since then, I've always had hard copies. I'm like, alright, forget it. Alright, so let's just go right to the first page as the agenda. So capital improvement plan, I'm not gonna spend any time. I just wanted you to see that we've done it and what we've done with that. It's a, to me, it's a living, breathing document that changes. Quite often. Big deal, of course, sanitary sewer. Utility rate evaluation, all the things we went through. We gave you a draft report. After this presentation, we'll finalize our recommendations and give you the final review. All of those items will be covered tonight. And then almost identical type of thing we're gonna do on the water utility. And it ends with the recommended rates. Alright, so we'll start out with, um, what do we do the next slide? What do we do for utility rate recommendation? Rates need to be a level, at a level to operate the utility and to do the CIP projects for future stability. That's generally what we're trying to get to. Again, not a hard and fast rule, but a utility should not run in the negative. And even for a one year, you try not to. Sometimes, and you'll see on yours, sometimes you do, but it's a planned event. If you have a huge backlog of money, why not spend it on a capital improvement project? Even if you run in the red that year, if you have a big back, you know, if you have plenty of money in the account. So you'll see we did that. Utility should provide revenues to fund operations, maintenance, capital improvements. And problems. So that's the way ideally you'd like to have it set up. So the next one is the CIP. This is just a general showing you kind of the cover of the CIP. We moved the CIP around quite a bit during this process. We started one way. Adam gave us a whole bunch of projects he thought were important. We prioritized some things. We put them in. We took a few things out. And we moved things up and back. If you're trying to look at this one, Lee can give you a O1 that has it all and you can read through it. Trying to read it on a PowerPoint isn't, isn't the name of the game. Just letting you know that it exists. Alright, so we'll jump first one into the sanitary sewer. Right side. So this part is the part that I cut out that is strictly dealing with sanitary sewer. So this is the part that in general is funded by the sanitary sewer utility. And all of these projects, some of these projects you'll see are part of street projects. But if you're doing sanitary sewers with your street projects, they get paid for typically with the, um, the utility. It doesn't have to be, but that's typically how people want to do it. That's how we usually do it. Um, all of the loans that are involved have all been baked into this. Alright, so let's just jump right into the five-year CIP. The big, the big projects that are associated with streets over the next five years. Sixth Street Widening Improvement Project. So Sixth Street is, I'm sure you're all very familiar, just extremely narrow street. Has water problems constantly with water breaks and things like that. So that was one of the very highest priorities. And if you're tearing that up, you should be definitely doing what's under the ground also, the water and sewer and straw. So that's the first one. And then Clay Street Reconstruction, some very similar things. That was a high priority upon the list. And again, these are projects that we're not doing overlays. We're not doing just in little small improvements. These are major improvement type projects. And so water and sanitary are involved with those. Then there's a whole number of asphalt overlay projects in the CIP, but they really don't get the sanitary utility at all. So the sewer utility itself, what is it paying for? Along with the sewer part of these streets projects, um, it pays for the wastewater treatment plant. The thing that's in this five-year is the baseline improvements. The design's about eighty percent done right now. But you're, and, and we've been in that process of looking at how do we fund that? So that's gonna come up a lot. Lift station improvements, something we haven't been doing a lot of, but it's on the CIP. And then we've always been wanting to put backup power on some of those lift stations. And that was on the CIP five years ago and got moved back to this five. So it did not get done in the past. And then the West Side Lift Station, that's kind of the growth area of the community. So if you want to grow your community, pretty much you'd have to do sanitary utilities typically. So that's, that's a, to me, a pretty standard type of West Side project. The West Side Sewer Project that we're doing is a very small portion of that that doesn't need the lift station. And then the replacement of meters and we, because they're actually water meters. But your community and most communities, for the most part, residential and commercial will bill off of your water use. So when you change out meters, you can pay for fifty percent of them with the sewer utility and fifty percent of them with the water. You don't have to do it that way, but that's pretty standard in the industry to try to do that. So the next one is the current financial status. Contrary to the water plant, the sewer plant's in really good shape financially, very good shape in my, my opinion. Um, your current rate, user rate, you have a user rate fee system. And, and user, the user fee and Sherry, correct me if I'm wrong, did I mess this one up a lot? The twenty-two dollars and eighteen cents is kind of a hookup fee. And so it doesn't give you, a lot of towns say, oh, you get hooked up, you get a thousand gallons. But in, in your case, you don't. That's just a hookup fee. Then for every thousand gallons after that, it's five dollars and seventy-two cents. And this has been a pretty stable rate for quite a while. The rural rate is higher, as you can see, approximately ten dollars higher onto the user, the, the user fee. And then West Liberty Foods has a very different set. They have a user fee, but then they also, some of their biggest flows come from their flows. So there are a thousand gallons and on a big kill day, they might use a million gallons a day. So that's a big one and you'll see some of the numbers. The BOD, these are the strengths of the wastewater and because those strengths matter, how much chemical, how much treatment you guys have to do. As the strengths go up, you get more, more revenue. And at a certain amount, if the strengths go up too much, there can be violations. Typically, you haven't been having a lot of violations. And so the, I mean, then you having those fees like that keep them. So that they would like to keep doing pre-treatment so they don't have to pay as much. Average bill, and this is just throughout the industry, how much, how do you, how do you compare bills? Everybody, well, you'll find out, everybody does a lot of this. This, this, um, accounting differently, but when you boil it down, does, how much are you paying for four thousand gallons? Seems to be the thing. Your average bill is about forty-five dollars and six cents. The average West Liberty Food bill is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. West Liberty Foods makes up about fifty percent of your revenues. And fifty percent comes from the rest of the, um, the utility, but primarily residents and commercial. So your current sewer balance as of June of two thousand twenty-four, and these are snapshots. So it could be five million then, it could be six million two days later, you know, or the other direction, it could be four million. But, but it's still having a snapshot of five million is a really good balance.
Is West Liberty Foods, um, half of our total utility or just the sewer revenue?
Just the sewer revenue. They do not do water. They don't take water from you except in emergency situations. And then you usually give them, Adam, you might know more than me, you give them money, you give them water untreated and there's some special rate. And it doesn't happen very, it's not something you can count on.
Okay.
Alright, so we don't even put that in there because it's just random. Alright, so that next one is end of year sewer utility balance. And again, we looked this over trying to see how is this plant operating? And I think you guys have heard over and over again, your water, your sewer utility treats sewage very, very efficiently. So these numbers we think are great. It, it's growing, it's doing very well. We say a, a minimum you'd ever wanna get down to is about a million and a half dollars and you're nowhere near that million and a half dollars. West Liberty Foods revenue, and you can see it jumps all over the place. You know, Lee and I have talked, we've been here a long time. And almost every year, they tell us revenue is going down. Almost every year. They're gonna make efficiencies, they're gonna do this, they're gonna do that. And I know they try. But as soon as they seem to try to do that, then they get a new line of roast beef or something like that that brings it back up. It's not their fault. I'm just saying they, they're, um, they're hard to count on for, for where they're at. So their revenues in millions of dollars, in my mind, has been reasonably stable. Even though it's jumped from one point five million back in twenty twenty to maybe as high as one point eight. This year, we projected about one point four five. We all know this year they've had some slow, slow time periods. But from what I understand, the last couple bills have been higher. So it sounds like their flows are picking back up. So I think that one point four five estimate's a pretty good estimate.
Leo, this is their revenue in what they add to West Liberty Sewer?
That's what they add to your utility that comes into you. So every month you get that check from them. Anyway, but, but so that amount of money goes into your coffers.
So this is like per year? Yeah.
Per year, yes. So what do we wanna do on rate increases? So, and, and, and some of these rate increases, we've talked about a lot throughout staff. But I think we're pretty much on the same page on water, on wastewater pretty easily. Um, we were recommending a five percent increase per year for the five years. And we'll do some comparisons later and show you. West Liberty Foods would go up at the exact same rate, five percent. So when we say five percent, if you went back to that slide, to a couple slides before, that's five percent on all of theirs. So that across the board, when we charge them for BOD, TSS, TKN, that all goes up five percent also. It's crossable. Alright? We, we've talked a lot about doing a, doing a state revolving loan on loan for the wastewater treatment. Matter of fact, we put in a, put in a, um, request to get onto the intended use plan. And, and the reason you do that is in case you wanna use it, if you're not on the intended use plan, you cannot use it. So you're gonna be on the intended use plan, which is good. Doesn't mean you have to have a loan at all. And a lot of people get on it just to be sure, back up. So we, we, we looked at that heavily. Do we wanna do it? We don't think it's probably necessary at this point. We think you have enough money in your coffers to fund your wastewater treatment plant baseline improvements. And we did some spreadsheets to show you here in a minute without an SRF loan. And that's a change to what I thought two months ago. So we've been, we've been doing a lot of manipulation to figure that out. Still available? Somebody said, hey, I wanna do it because I'm really worried about West Liberty Foods. And we wanna get this thing tied down and have that in the coffers. Okay, I can understand it. But in general, normally you wouldn't need it. So projects in the CIP, all of these projects are still in the CIP. We didn't have to take anything out. And they're all funded with this five percent increase in revenues. No loan. You can see down, and I, I don't have them on yours, the red numbers under annual gain and loss. The annual gain and loss, you can see as you start to take money out for these CIP projects, you go to an annual loss. In the first couple of years, twenty-six and twenty-seven and twenty-eight. But if you look below that at your revenue, your, your fund balance, you, the lowest you get is about two million dollars. Then in twenty thirty, it goes up and we even projected, or twenty twenty-nine, excuse me, we projected out a few more years. It's going right straight. It's going back up. That's why I said you're in a very healthy situation. Alright, end of year balances with no SRF loan. And as this one shows, that in twenty-eight, you're at one point nine, twenty-nine, you were two point five. I think we did twenty thirty and didn't show it here, but it was like two point eight. And we'll show that in the final report, that it is on, it's on the move up. What we would tell you is if you decided to jump right back into phase two of your wastewater treatment plant. We would not suggest probably in the next five years after that, paying for it with a, without an SRF loan. But this first one, we would, we recommend that you do. So now we look at the surrounding community. How do you rate yourselves compared to others? And you gotta be careful with these because almost everybody anymore has their rates on the website. But they typically have what their rates are now. And then you call over to the clerks a lot and most of those clerks have no clue. They think their rates are gonna go up at one percent, two percent, and they usually tell you that on the phone. And it's, it's almost laughable because we know in the industry, it just doesn't happen. Right now, people's rates are going up. So like, for instance, West Branch, we asked them and they're like, oh, our, our rates will barely go up, maybe one or two percent. But we're doing a pretty big wastewater treatment plant for them and the engineer that's doing it says, oh no, their rates are going up. You know, it just hasn't gone through their system. So what we do is we say, okay, let's assume that most rates are gonna go up at five percent and nothing, nothing more than that. And then how do you compare it out? So this first one though, is just looking at current rates. So you are, you are at this for four thousand gallons. That's the easiest one to look at. You're at about forty-five dollars for the typical municipal, I mean, typical residential rate. About forty-five dollars for four thousand gallons. And you're really down almost very low compared to others. So you're in very good position with a low rate. That means somebody's being very efficient at your wastewater treatment plant and doing a great job. So we're pretty happy with all of that. Alright, now we go to the future rates. This is adding in the five percent, five percent per year, every year, every year, five percent, five percent up till twenty thirty. And again, this is what we're trying to show here is what those dollars are. So the dollars, for instance, on the sewer rate is like twenty-nine cents, thirty cents, thirty-one cents. And that is per thousand gallons. And the next one over shows what that's doing to your user fee. So we tried to show it in dollars of what is going up. And then the next slide. And I'm racing through this because wastewater is probably not as big in the future. So if you look at the next one now, now we're saying almost the same kind of thing. Except this is for West Liberty Foods. What are their future rate recommendations with five percent? What are, what are we doing with them as far as for flow, for BOD, for TSS? And this is all in the report, but we just wanted you to see that it was done. Sherry recommended we put it in there and probably a good idea because we had done it earlier. Next one. Typical bill for four thousand gallons with, with the increases. So now we went all the way out to twenty thirty. And said, what, what will your rates be compared to others at twenty thirty? And this is where I get a little nervous because, um, I'm sorry, this one, sorry, is typical sewer bill for four thousand gallons. Your current one, if we just look at city, forty-five dollars. And by the time you're done, you're fifty-seven, fifty-one. Very, very palatable to me, very much gonna fit everything. The next one talks about your, your surrounding community. So again, if you're looking at for this four thousand gallons for West Liberty City. Fifty-seven dollar, fifty-seven dollars for four thousand gallons. And again, you're at, I, I had her put up, she didn't put it on here, she put on water. But some of these with the asterisks, we're going on what they're telling us. They're not, they don't have meetings like this. They haven't had rate studies to show them yet. So that's why even, even some of the other smaller ones, you can, you can tell where they're at. So your, your fifty-seven dollars is gonna, gonna fit. I, I looked back at our old study we did for you five years ago. And you were, at that time, you were one of the very greatest. So we were projecting by five years, he'd be at the highest. But you're actually still at almost the lowest, so. Alright, so to us, we think you shouldn't use the SRF loan on this project. We think you should fund all the CIP projects and we think you're in great shape, but we think you should do a five percent just to keep up with inflation. Your costs are going up no matter what. And I'll get to that a lot more in the water. Does anybody have any questions on the sewer side? Anything? I know I raced through this. There's a whole report. And we'll, we'll give you another final report with these recommendations polished up. Like I said, until a couple of months ago, I was pretty convinced that we better do an SRF loan. And at one time, we had phase one and phase two together, but you would have had to be alone. So that's why we did the paperwork. It's not extensive paperwork. That's why we did the paperwork to get you on the IUP application. No questions on that part? None for me. Alright, let's go to the less fun side. The water rates. And the first, first CIP graph is very much exactly what I just showed you, except now we're just showing you what's in the water utility. This is all part of a big spreadsheet that you guys can get a hold of and take a look at. And then, and how do we fund the CIP for water? We did the same thing. If you move around a road project, you're moving around where the water comes in. So there really, you don't, you have to balance it. You have to be able to say, okay, the sewer rate, how does water rate and how does the geo bonding work? And that's all been looked at through there. So the primary water projects in this five-year CIP, we talked about it already, the streets, same streets, nothing's changed there. The only projects that are a hundred percent water utility, we had a West Side Looping Project. And then we had water meter replacements, which, you know, that's fairly expensive, but we're only talking fifty percent. At one time, we were gonna do a hundred percent and many water utilities take on that at a hundred percent. But it's not a hundred percent necessary to do that. So especially because your water utility is gonna need some help here, we decided let's split it fifty-fifty. That makes it at least a little, little, little better. So your end of year. Um, end of year balances, fund balances, as you can see, you're kinda dropping. And that's eight twenty-four in twenty twenty-four was a snapshot then, but we knew at that time it was dropping. Lee had, Lee was very aware it was dropping. Um, primarily well number two, we funded with, without doing any kind of loans. So that was a problem. And then as we get to fiscal year twenty-five, um, it's projected just to be, I think, is that three seventy balance or the three fifty? You guys don't know. The bond, the, the CDs.
That's, I think it's a two seventy.
Three seventy, okay. So you can't touch that three seventy. You're gonna finish with a, in twenty-five, with a, with a balance barely over that three fifty. Maybe, we're hoping. So that's, that means you're in, you're in a world of hurt. You've gotta do some pretty dramatic things to, to get this out of that hole, more or less. And we're gonna talk to you about what those are, what those are. For your type of a fund, I would never wanna be below six hundred thousand. And that means six hundred thousand above that three seven. So you're really looking at about a million dollars for where you'd like to be. Alright, next one is, let's talk about some increases. Due to the current shortages in the water fund, the delayed capital improvement projects. The rates of the water need to be increased by about twenty-five percent for the first two years. And then fifteen percent every year after for the next three. So those are pretty big rate, rate increases and we'll show you what that does. Also, some of your projects, the Sixth Street, the Spencer Street and Clay Street. We recommend, and again, a lot of cities do this, that because your water is in a bad position, you're, you probably can get a geo bond. The city can get a geo bond. You can pay for those water, parts of those water improvements out of that geo bond instead of going to the water utility. Uh, Leclair does it all the time in their wastewater. I don't know why they do it, but they do. Their water, they don't, but in their wastewater, they do it all the time, crossboard. And I, I know West Liberty's done it in the past too. It's been a while, but we've done them that way. Um, so, so we recommend you do it this time. And that means you're gonna take seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the water utility costs. That are gonna end up going to the general revenue of the, of the community. Um, the study also recommends that you get an SRF loan for the meter replacements and the West Side Tower Loop. Though that would be about another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That type of project, we did one almost identical in Sebelah just recently, where we did the entire town in water meters. Now, they were on, they didn't have any meters. So we had to put new meters in their whole town and then we did a looping project and, and that fits the SRF very well. But we know that you could get on the intended use plan and you could get that funded. There's some hoops to jump through, but that's always the case. So why do we have to do these rate increases for the water? What, what, what has it given you to do this? Why, why do you want to not take, take your CIP projects and just not do them? Because that's another option out there. The current water utility fund is, is set up to do capital improvement project. A lot of that is to operate and maintain the system. If you don't do them, you may not be gaining anything. Four Streets, an example. Um, you might start having breaks, you have contamination areas, you go to do something and you run into it. Now you're gonna get into the place where you were with well two, where all of a sudden you're gonna have to do something and you're not gonna have time to plan and do. Um, like a loan type of thing. So that's one reason. You need to be able to operate and maintain your system. Uh, new regulations. Currently, the US EPA is maintaining that all utilities review their lead and copper, and I think you did, did that, your lead service. Um, they haven't come out and said you shall replace yet, but they could very quickly. They could come out and say that. They've given you, I don't know, did you guys get a grant for that one?
No, we just are looking.
A lot of people are getting grants for some of this. And, and maybe you'll be able to get a grant. But you need to be ready for it, is what I'm saying. You need your utility to be in a healthy place because these regulations aren't stopping. Uh, there's a couple of other ones that, that have, have shown up on my radar recently. That if you get like a reading of silver or something like that, they'll make you start doing a lot of testing anymore. And, and, and if it doesn't test right, they're gonna, you have an RO system, which is really good for a lot of these future problems. It really will help. But you gotta keep your, your plant up and running well. Cost for, and I know you guys know this, but cost for licensed employees at, at these water plants and they're, and they're expensive. And these people have opportunities. So if you wanna keep your people, you almost have to pay them at quality rates to keep them on board. And then the supplies even for the RO, your chemicals for that, for running some of that is expensive and it's not going down. And we know in the industry right now, if I bid a streets project or a sewer. Um, just a, just a water main project out in the city, those prices have come way down from during COVID. Water treatment and wastewater treatment haven't come down at all. They're still at higher rates than they were then. So rates went up like twenty-five percent and stayed there. So if you bid some of these wastewater treatment, we're bidding twenty-five percent higher than before COVID. And that's just the way life is. And then to expand your utility, if you wanna be able to expand to others and to people that come into town. I know Lee had given us one, 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 uh, potential person and, and if they become water users, you probably won't be able to serve them if you don't. Alright, so this, the next one is the CIPs that are funded with the recommendations that we've given you. So as I told you earlier, the West Side Loop, we moved it out to twenty twenty-eight and twenty twenty-nine. And, um, some of the, some of the other ones that we, these ones that you see crossed out in here. The reason it's crossed out, we wanted to show them here, but it's taken out of your water utility. You're gonna pay for it with a geo bond. If, if it's funded with an SRF loan, then it stays in your utility because you still have to pay that SRF loan back. The nice thing about the SRF loan for this utility now, you don't have to have like that three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. You don't have to have that set aside. The rates are generally at least two to three to four points below what you can get at a bank typically. And you don't have to have a lot of the other things that, that these other like geo bonds. Um, ask you to have. So as you can see there, it looks to me like, um, in twenty twenty-five, your annual loss is gonna be. Two hundred and thirty-six thousand. But if you do these rate increases and do these things, then you get positive right away in twenty-six. You get positive and it keeps going up and up. I think we only showed, does this one show? Yeah, it only shows twenty-nine. Thirty, we, we suggested you keep that fifteen percent. That's something you might wanna look at when you get there. Because you're starting to get real healthy by the end of it. By the end, but, but we're showing twenty-nine, to me, that looks like a healthy utility. So let's look at the surrounding community water rates. The current rate for West Liberty is real well. You're doing, you're, you're, you're very low compared to a lot of your competitors. The current rate for West Liberty is real well. You're doing, you're very low compared to a lot of your competitors. I had her put American Water on, Iowa American Water, only because I live in Baton Rouge, it's the same rate. So a lot of times, you're significantly higher than like the bigger cities, but in this case, you're not. So your rates, to me, are low right now, and you've got to do something. So that one's for that, the thing that we put in here. Iowa American sent a letter to everybody in the state that is on Iowa American Water that says your rates are going up on, as of April 25, 38.68%. So you're not alone in a bad position. There's a lot of water utilities throughout the state that are having to do this kind of thing. We know a lot about Iowa Ameri- I told you West Branch, West Branch, when I spoke about their sewer, their water is the same way. They don't show the out years, they just show current. So future rate increases with this 25% for two years and 15 for the next three, you can see, your rate is going up pretty fast when you have that. So you're going going from a current rate for 1,000 gallons in the city of 956 up to $22.72. Well, that's a pretty, pretty big jump from 2025 up to 2030. Go to the next one. What is a typical water bill for 4,000 gallons with the rate increase? So right now, you're somewhere around what we said, 38, and it goes, if you keep going, you'd be at 90, which that's a pretty high bill, but I'm telling you, it's by the time you get to 30, you might want to do it anyway, because I'm having a feeling your competitors are going to be right there. From what we're seeing in our side of the business, and we do a lot of water and waste water throughout. So you look at your surrounding communities, and where do you fit? We showed you the Iowa American one already, Long Grove. They're just, they don't even have water treatment, so they're just now getting water treatment, and their rates are going to go up, going up pretty good. So we know all about them. You're not at the highest level, but you're really close on some of those. This isn't, this isn't what I would call great, but it's the best I think we can do at this point. So then the next one, why a large rate increases in water? Why do you have to jump to 25%? You know, why can't we go 5%, 10%, 15%, that type of thing? And like I said earlier, the cost that happened, we never adjusted our rates. Most rates haven't changed since we did the rate, since we did the rates that he five years ago. They've stayed the same. They weren't relooked at, probably should have been relooked at right during COVID when those rates were going up. But I know my staff was getting 10% and 15% raises, and I think you're, and the reason you had to do it is because, again, you want to keep good people, you've got to keep up. West Liberty has held their rates for four years. The other thing is, you start looking at, you've got such quality water, and I know a lot of people don't understand it, but you're still giving them an unbelievable price for water. You know, an average bottle of water is a buck fifty to a buck sixty, and if you put it down to what is, what is a 16-ounce thing of water from you, you ask, like 0.0025 cents. I mean, it is so tiny, and I know that doesn't always play with everybody, but it does tell you that you're giving them extremely some of the highest quality water in the state at a very, very, very efficient rate right now. Well, I had for water.
It's a good example to share with people.
It is a good example, yes. So, oh, we got out of order, one more. Sorry about that. So what are we recommending? And this is for the water and sewer both. So accept the rate increases as we recommended today. Implement a resolution to adopt and direct the staff to implement those rate increases yearly. You can always stop them. If in '29, you decide, hey, everything's good, you can kind of pull the resolution, do another one. But I would recommend you do it. That way, it's in place. Otherwise, I've been around enough to know it doesn't get done. You get a change, you say you weren't running, your counterpart comes in and doesn't know all the background stuff that you know. And it's hard sometimes for them to vote, because, so we recommend just getting it in place, doing it for four years, five years, four years, and then recommending a study. And we think that works. A lot of communities, I'd say the great majority of the communities I work for are doing that now.
And we're doing that with electric, right?
And you're doing that with electric, right. And I think it's the first time you've done it with electric.
And solid waste.
And solid waste? So this first bite on water is a tough pill to swallow, but I think it's, I almost think you have to. I don't, I don't, we looked at, with your staff, your staff, Adam, we looked at trying to go lower, and they can't see how to do it either. We worked hard trying to look at it. You know, even if we took projects out, moved them out, just your operational maintenance is pushing right there.
Yeah, I guess that's my question was, if we're really healthy in wastewater, right? And we're not healthy in the water?
Correct.
Is there any way that we could, when these rates increase, like maybe slower the rate of wastewater, so it compensates on that bill for some of our folks? We are a low-income community.
I understand. And I don't know that you can do that. And you might have to help me, Lee, with the audit. They're going to, they don't want you to cross over. You can do it with the general obligation. Your general fund can pick it up. We recommended that. But you can't go to your wastewater.
Yeah.
I don't think you can even borrow from it. I'm not bothered by how that works, but I know you, if you do, you have to pay it back fairly, like within a year.
So essentially, with, so the wastewater fund has continued to grow healthy because we've not done any major projects for the last five years in that fund. So it's been operating efficiently, status quo. And part of it is because we've been gearing up for these phase projects that we've talked, they were in the previous capital improvement loan.
Yes.
Five years ago, we continued to raise the rate. It was recommended 5% wastewater treatment, but we did 3% instead. And we were fortunate, because again, we didn't take on any large projects. We, the big thing in 2019, we brought the operations under the city and left a contract agreement that was very, very expensive. So that also helped the fiscal part of the fund. And again, I mean, no project in wastewater treatment is going to be less than $2 million. So therefore, just as you're saying, but we also have to be able to make sure that if we're going to use cash flow, we have to stay fiscally on top of it to make sure we continue to build those reserves, because we will drop. But if without a 5%, we would continue to drop. And then that places us in a situation, when it comes to bonding, that the bonders, the investors are saying, well, you're not very responsible, because you know you're not staying where you need to stay in order to keep your fund balance healthy.
And that's why we've recommended in the water to do the SRF loan, because you don't have that bond issue.
Yeah, okay. So I understand what you're saying is like, if we, if we have to do a significant increase in water, then potentially, maybe we wouldn't have to do it right now in Sebelah. Is that how?
Yeah, but I don't know, like, I don't know how, what can you guys do, so?
And so this is where we're saying we would want to move forward with at least a 5%. Because of those projects and cash flowing, we want to maintain an annual increase to stay healthy. And then also, if we, if the council at the time, you would have agreed to stay, even if they would have done a 3% over the past five years, you would have made up 18%. And so then the difference between 25 and 18 may be what you would be looking at today to increase. Who knows? Because again, I mean, the costs and things, but even if five years ago, you did 5%, there's your 25%. So you may have been in a similar situation where you were only looking at continuing on the next five years at 5%, maybe 8%, but it wouldn't be as significant. And this happened before in water. That's the reason why they had to jump the rates significantly back in 2013, 14, when they did that. It also happened in electric. And part of it is just having council understand that fiscal piece of it, that you want to maintain an annual increase, so you're not talking, you know, $2 a year, you're talking pennies a year. And then with the expansion of the utility, provides us the opportunity to grow utility customers. So if we're, if we're growing utility customers, then that also may allow you in the next five years to say, with the growth of utility customers, then maybe going forward, then your rate increase is only 3% because you've grown. But we can't grow utility customers, we can't expand utility to them.
The other thing I think you should know is that, taken from the wastewater, not doing the wastewater treatment plant, not doing the rate increase to the wastewater side, the sewer side. Five years ago, West Liberty Foods was on the other side of the equation. They were asking, what could we do to give them more capacity? And they wanted more. Now, they backed off of that because of some of the things they had, but if they come back to you, and we did that study, and we showed them, we could, we could do improvements to give them more capacity, but it would be another three or four million or five million dollars. At this point, of course, they don't want to touch that, but, you know, five years ago, that's not where they were at. They were the other side. We want capacity, and we want to be able to make sure that you're not going to have any violations, because that hurts their ISO, whatever they're on, but their their quality program, if they get blamed for any of the violations. But what we'll do is we'll wrap this study up, send it to you, and you can make the decisions and you're in a, you're in a pretty tough spot to have to make tough decisions. I understand that. We tried to give you the best information we had, and when I even try to make recommendations, I try to think I'm going to be sitting where you are. What would I want to do?
I think the other thing is, is that within our audit, you saw the write-ups for our covenants, and that's also why we need to have the increases, is so that we fall back into line with those as well for the water, because we are required to meet 120% of our bond. And so that would mean that you have to have 120% revenue over expenses through your, through your fund, or through your cash fund at the end of the year. So it's not, you know, and that's where your fiscal health, what we're talking about, has to be. So with what Leo's saying, when he wraps up for you folks to think about, so when Leo wraps up and they bring the report, then there's something for council and for you folks to think about. You can have it go to the utility committee, and then staff can work with the utility committee to come up with, you know, based on this, we're the committee. If you have some more questions and you want to identify, and then from there, the committee can make the recommendation for the ordinance updates. Or you can just continue to work on it as a council as a whole and move through the ordinance. I can tell you that the wastewater treatment, as far as the rate, effective rate, is not, as Leo's saying, it's not, you know, a big consideration right now. With the water, we definitely have to move forward soon with that, because we will be, we will receive another note on audit, and then our investors that are holding those funds, they get, they get that information knowing that we're following the lower covenants. Now, we reserve the 370,000 for a purpose of, gosh, if we go into a negative, we've got enough to cover our bond payments for a fiscal year, but that's not idea, you know, I mean, we don't want to have to do that, so. So that's just kind of some thought process for that.
So looking at page 23, we increased a little bit, not a lot, 200,000 a year for a couple of years, and then we've had this huge drop off here of roughly a million dollars.
You want to know water side? Right.
Yep.
It was, it had started going down in 2021, but like you said, a huge drop between '23 and '24.
Right.
And part of, so I mean, I'll be careful how I say this, but a part of it is, is we also, we, if you remember, we did refi on our water, and we were able to save an interest payment, roughly around $70,000. So that was a good thing, because then that held us out a little bit longer. But there were some other situations that occurred with cash flowing projects or emergency fixes. For example, our old membranes, we didn't have it on the schedule, and so that was an expense that we had not planned for, but it's an expense that we had to do. In addition to that, then there was also some utility rates that fell behind and didn't updated, and then we updated them, and we didn't go back and collect that loss rather than, we just kept going. So that in itself was where we fell, probably around 850, almost $900,000 short. Had we had that, we'd still probably be definitely looking at, you know, 15 to a 20% increases, because we hadn't been doing the maintenance of keeping the fund healthy, so. So, I mean, just trying to be, you know, and again, you're always welcome to come in and and sit down, and we can go through those specific numbers over those years, because those are the same numbers that we provided, the engineers, as they were going, we can answer those questions with them.
And this, I remember there being like a water leak for a really long period of time. Does that have anything to do with that, or does that affect why? In 2024?
So the water leak is typically not going through a meter, so they're un, yeah, they're typically not feeding through liters, so we're not really collecting. But it does, could impact, you know, pressure and things, but it doesn't change that the utility customers are still the same. And they tend to average. There was a period of time, I'm going to tell you, during COVID, where those numbers are up, because there was more usage. There was also more home pools. I mean, not kidding, I mean, there was a lot of pool fills from people from their own homes. So those, you know, those things, you know, when people were staying at home more, then the utility was getting used more. But then when everything kind of returned and most people went back, then you started seeing those numbers fluctuating, yeah.
And you, when you asked that question, most utilities see somewhere around 20%. If you just look at what was pumped and what they bill for, there's a 20% loss, in a lot, almost all of them. And a lot of them work really hard to try to get that down. They'll have companies come in and try to find all those leaks. And I think some are pretty successful, but I don't think you ever get it below like 15.
It's good to know.
But it is something that a lot of communities are chasing that a lot.
And it's, yeah, and I, so our understanding, again, with the valve, I mean, with valve replacements, you know, that's managing, you know, allows those leaks to be handled more timely. Go away from having broken those main, major water main leaks, and how to impact that, allows staff to control and shut off, yeah.
New valves, a lot of times pay for themselves, new meters, excuse me, new meters, pay for themselves, made it quickly. Because those old meters, they don't stop, they just go slow. And you get a new one that's accurate, and usually, you're going to get, you're going to get, you're going to get people to have more accurate charges of what they're using. And it's generally not slower. I came to my house recently, wanted to change my valve out, my heater out. I'm like, well, it's working just perfect. Didn't like that.
So again, if you have questions, you know, don't hesitate to reach out to Leo and his team, or, um. Men who talk about us, and go through, uh, a little bit more, if you've got some more questions after having just more time to digest that information.
Well, I think it'd be pretty important for either councils as a whole, or the utility committee to start this. More ASAP than down the line. I don't know how, like, you mentioned if we should do it all as a whole, or. But it's the utility committee and give something back, I don't. I kind of expect it to sit in the utility committee for too long either. With Leo's presentation, things seem to be understandable, and. We just got to decide what was that going to do.